Cookies.
I mean, they're from you?
No, they're from, they're from Treetop.
Okay. So they have to taste the same as the others, but strawberry and chocolate?
I don't know. They look different. What do you think?
It sounded to me maybe like Rick Herman. Rick, are you our call-in user? Maybe not. I'm going, I'm going to call Rick real quick just to make sure.
Hey, everybody's screen is showing black. Is that the same thing with everybody else? No? Shoot.
You have your video turned on? It's not all black, it's just...
Yeah, we have our video turned on, but it's just like, I can just see the, the top of like people's foreheads and that's it. Everything else is black. Okay, thanks.
I did confirm that is Rick who's joined us as the call-in user.
Okay, he owes us all cookies. Is Kent Anderson gonna join us?
I expect so. I haven't heard otherwise. I know sometimes it's a race from work, so if he does jump on it, maybe a little late.
Okay. Are we ready to get started? Okay, everybody, welcome to our February ninth, Tuesday, February ninth, 2021 work session. I would like to note, all commissioners are here with the exception of Kent Anderson. Do we want to, we'll just go, should we just go into presentation and reports, Mr. Eggit?
Yeah, we can do that. There's actually quite a bit going on to report. Obviously legislative session, I've been sending you multiple comments about that. So look through those emails I've sent. If you have any questions about anything that you've seen in any of those I emailed to you, let me know. I'll try to send those to you occasionally, so you're at least aware of what's going on that way. Another thing coming up here soon, well, relatively soon, registration will be soon. There's an American Planning Association Utah Chapter Conference. This year it's down in I want to say Cedar City, or something like that, Rice Canyon, something like that. Anyway, I'll get more information. Bill Colbeath has actually encouraged that we have planning commissioners consider going to that. It's not something we've provided as far as an opportunity in the past, but something he feels strongly in other cities he's, he's worked in where planners go. They do actually invite planner, planning commissioners to go to those, which ironically I never knew. So I guess you learned something new. Anyway, you're all going to be welcome to go to that. I'll get you more information as I receive that from him and you can go. I'll turn, or otherwise, I do have, I'm looking around my office. I got hammered with a bunch of recent mittles today. So I have the three lots subdivision that you saw a couple of weeks ago from AWA Engineering Group, where the old Best Buy was. I have the recent middle for that that came in today. I have a recent middle for their site plan stuff that's part of that project. I have the Dutch Brothers Coffee recent middle for their final site plan review, and I have received a new submittal for a convenience store on the corner of Gibbey's Floral Property. So all those will be before the planning commission in two weeks. Also, I have a conditional use permit for a sign, billboard sign conversion that just came in to digital. So all of you have that before you, as well as the group. So with billboards, please pay attention, there's a few bills that have come through committee relative to billboards, so just take a look at those. It won't apply to this application, but obviously if these bills get passed, could have application in future dates with discussion of billboards. So we may be bringing new code changes to the planning commission following what state legislature does and doesn't approve in the form of all these different bills. Some affect housing, some affect signage, as far as billboards and other things. So I will try to keep on top of everything and with the help from our city attorney, bring those forward at a later date and try to explain why and how we have new code changes if it gets warranted to do so. With that, other things going on, the typical projects are still moving forward that we've talked about. Harbor Freight is moving very vigorously, I think would be the right word, in their site, to get that place done and open. The Five Below site where Pier One used to be, that's looking good for them to be open maybe in early April. The Zeppe's building is, is pretty much done. They just need to pass a final, final review, but it's pretty much there and we might even, depending on their needs, issue a temp occupancy if it was required just to get them going. So that should be opening very soon. A little earlier than I had told you before, but it's still probably timeline is maybe two weeks out, so the end of February, maybe not early March, like Richmond said. Other than that, trying to think, Falcon Hill, obviously we keep having progression up there. You see the buildings that continue to go in. I think they're on their second, it's kind of a hybrid building. It's a two-three building. It's got some connectivity, so they have the one big building done and they're working on building two and three that are connected. So that's moving forward up there. And then the Riverdale Landing Phase Two Center, that's where we just approved the, the three eateries there along Riverdale Road. That's getting to the point where we finally are ready to record the plat and the RDA is gonna discuss a little bit, a few items logistically with the RDA board, but that one should be ready to go here very soon. So that's everything. Lot going on. It's normally what happens, February, March, April around here. So we're probably going to be fairly busy in the near future as a commission and we'll keep you, we'll keep you on your toes with all things coming and going. So that's it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. We do have a lot going on. Consent items, our meeting minutes. I don't know if anybody's found anything in them that they want to bring up now. We're good. So our action items, one is our action item one A, public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding a rezon request for properties located approximately 1526, 1528, 1560, and 1580 West Ritter Drive, Riverdale, Utah 84405. A zoning change from agricultural A1, regional planned, commercial, commercial CP3, and low-impact transition overlay LIT zoning to single-family residential R16 zoning requested by Riverdale Living LLC. Do you want to talk about that, Mr. Eggit?
Yeah, I'll talk about the actual, obviously, consideration portion of that. Clearly, the public hearing, it operates like a typical public hearing. All the notice has gone out, property's been signed, that sort of thing. So I'll go over the executive summary and then you have the other items that are attached to it, and then if you have questions for me, you can go from there. The petitioner in this case is Riverdale Living LLC. They were represented in their submittal by Brittany Yates. And Josh has helped along the way a little bit as well, but it's mostly been Brittany that's done the work. They're requesting, as you know, the rezon of the properties ranging from 1526 to 1580 West Ritter Drive, which would be on the north side of Ritter Drive as it works towards Freeport Park Drive there, between 1500 and Freeport Park Drive. And as you noted, it's got three existing zoning in the form of A1 agricultural, the CP3 and the LIT zoning. As shown in your packet, you'll see the map and you can see how that existing zoning currently lays out on which properties in that area. The request is for the single-family residential R16 zoning. When you think R16, that means minimum square foot for lots of 6,000 square feet. So that's, that's what the six is the signal for. Tells you the thousands square feet minimum lot size for the zoning. This would be to allow for the possibility of future development for single-family residential units on the property. You can read obviously their, their statements as to why and how that would be per their, their thoughts and their application in the best interest of the city to consider this rezon request. The neighboring property to the north is currently zoned R5, which is the Cherry Creek Apartments, which is the highest zoning we, we have available in Riverdale City for projects. And then properties to the east are currently zoned with A1 and CP3 zoning. A1 directly to the east CP3 is kind of diagonal, I guess, east of the little sliver that is existing CP3 as part of this rezon request. Probably the south are zoned with A1 zoning and properties to the west are zoned with C3 zoning. The request is for 5.67 acres of land. And again, like I said, we have met all state code and city code requirements for public hearing noticing and scheduling for this meeting for direction of the planning commission at our last planning commission meeting. Obviously, this is a, a recommendation, consideration, discussion, so the planning commission can, at your discretion, make any recommendation that is appropriate with the appropriate findings of fact to support your recommendations and your findings on the rezon request. The property ownership is under Riverdale Living LLC and L. Leon Poulsen Trust, Hafetal. So the Poulsen family is involved and the other properties are under that Riverdale Living LLC conglomerate group. The majority of the property that's in this area is currently undeveloped with a few homes also on place. The ones that are currently still being utilized and lived in are rental homes and then obviously the old tallest property on the end is, is currently vacated. Otherwise, there's nothing else really going on on these properties. Let's see here. The general plan used for this area is currently set as residential low density and this proposed rezon request and project is in compliance with the land use designation supporting the area by the land use master plan element of the Riverdale General Plan. There's also a documentation that's provided in your packet as a more clear definition of residential low density. Reason I've added that is both the last review of, of a rezon we had at the planning commission and city council level, there were some question as to what does that even mean in the land use master plan? You now have the language in your packet that tells you what that means. So that, that should hopefully clear, clarify that pretty directly. If you have any questions about that, though, the next two pages after the executive summary, let me know. We can talk about that. Following those two pages then of the, the general plan, I've provided then that map that I was talking to you about, that outlines how the zoning is set up, and then I've put a black outline around the area that's being requested for rezon. Following that is the application from the applicants, and you can see the appropriate signatures for that. The actual, I guess you'd say summary or written response sheet is thereafter provided from the applicants about their request for this and how they meet the questions down on our application on the first page that are items A through D on the very first, you know, application sheet. And then following that, you'll see the map, plat map outline of the area, the legal description for the property. Thereafter, the fee being paid by the applicants and then the public hearing notice checklist for the project being met. And all the supporting documentation showing that the public hearing notice has been submitted as required by code. And then obviously you'll see the sign placement locations. And then the standard examiner notice is at the end. So that should show that we fulfilled all of the requirements for the public hearing elements associated with a rezon request. And with that, I would defer back to the planning commission if you have any questions for me. I don't see the, I don't see the, I can't think now, I'm having a block. The Yates family on here yet? So, but this is kind of a, just a pre-hearing anyway, so it'd probably be more appropriate to ask questions of them in the main meeting, and I suspect they will join us. So with that, I would defer to you as planning commissioners, if you have any questions for me directly or thoughts. Again, if it's more specific to the application in the packet other than maybe clarifying a detail, let's maybe hold off for those kind of comments and questions until the main meetings from the applicants have the ability to speak and the public is available to hear what needs to be said. So with that, I'll defer back to you, Chair Fiers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Do we have any comments, questions, you guys?
Yeah, I, I'm not really on the action items, but just a little clarification. Mike, on that proposal for the Maverick up on 1500, touched on a little bit at the last meeting about what they were going to try and improve the traffic on Riverdale Road to kind of help flow. Do you know what they're thinking of doing at, you know, at that intersection? Because I've seen a lot of comments, you know, online, people complaining about the traffic there and...
The whole, well, with that build-out, like I said, this is a UDOT project that's going to solve a lot of the problems of that intersection. It's tied to the, the, it's tied to the, what is that? Fifty, 51, no, not 5200. The Roy exit, what's called the Roy exit, I can't remember. 5600, thank you. It's tied to that project. So pretty much that project's all but ready to go. They already had the public comment. We had all the requirements by FHWA. Right now, that's just trying to get the funding it needs to earmark it. The hope is that within the next two years, it's funded and we have a project or so. But this project, the, the road left turns would be part of that. Whenever that gets funding in the very near future, that has been a priority and UDOT has agreed to change how you come off the freeway there and how you interact with that intersection to get onto Riverdale Road and then create two, two left turn pockets going on to Cozy Dome 1500 that are by protected turn signals right onto them. So yeah, we'll be very involved in making sure that that works properly as they put those designs together and bring those forward. They may even present to the city council those designs for some feedback from the leadership and the public. But at this point, that's how that would happen. What that would also do, when you have two lanes turning left like that, that makes that throat of the intersection on that north side going up towards America First have to be widened to accommodate that, that new use. So you'll see some improvements that way. Maverick also has listened very closely to staff and engineering and made sure that, that in their concept drawings, the two access points that they will have on the site are as far north as they can be without obviously touching each other, right? They're still separated, but they're both pushed very far to the north to link up with the existing accessways across the street for the Motel 6 and the office park. They line up with both of those driveways. So if you go on Cozy Dome today and you look at where those are, if you just imagine across the street on the Gibbey property, two other access points, that's where they will be. One is more for the bigger trucks, which will be the furthest north. That's how the trucks will get in and you know, dump the fuel and then leave. The other will be more for the general customer to access. So that's what they're, that's what they're conceptualizing right now. And that's what, I haven't looked through the drawings because they just came today, but that's what I suspect you will see at the planning commission meeting for the preliminary view.
Mike, remember many, many months ago, we passed something on two billboards? I thought one was McDonald's and I can't remember what the other one was. What's going on there?
Those are electronic messaging signs. McDonald's has put theirs in. Those were conditional use permits. McDonald's is installed. Applebee's still has theirs. It's still technically good. They could come in and ask for that, but Applebee's in light of the pandemic and some of the things changed their mind. They were going to do it five or six months to try to generate interest after COVID hit and then they changed their mind. So, so it may or may not happen on that one, but the, the McDonald's one has been installed.
I have another question. Somebody said Habit Burger closed up. Is that right?
No, it's, it's a misunderstanding. They need to put their signage on their building better. We, we looked into that today. Their, their drive-through is open, but they don't have staffing to keep the store open right now. I think it's either COVID-driven or hiring-driven. I don't know which. So they just have enough staffing to run the drive-through and they have some weird hours this week. I don't know how long that will stay that way, but they're not closed. I think it's just, they didn't communicate to the public very well, which is not a good way. You do not say this location closed and that's how you put in your sign. That's not a good way to promote that your, your lobby's closed. So you know, if you go to the drive-through, it'll, it'll say drive-through open due to limited staff, dining closed or something like that. There's another sign-up. But yeah, the main sign is confusing.
Anybody have anything else?
Sorry, I don't, sorry, I don't have any training or anything. Like I said, I, I think I, I've been overwhelmed with all this legislative updates. I figured that was kind of training enough to get you aware of what's going on. There's a lot of pretty intense discussions on what's been going on this year. So make sure you're paying attention. If you do in the future, though, want to talk about one of these meetings or have questions.
Mike, I've got a question about the R16 zone. It does mention in here, the purpose is for, to provide for single-family residential areas and on larger individual lots. So what kind of lot size within R16 are you looking, are, are allowed? Approximately, how many lots can they fit into that area and things like that?
Yeah, the general, so what that means by city code is, again, R16 is minimum 6,000 square foot lot. You're talking, I, I'd have to pull it up between now and maybe the next meeting. I can tell you the exact setbacks, but I think it's 25 front yard, 10 and eight side yard or eight and eight side yard and rear is like 25 or 20. So I'd have to look closer at that. As far as the numbers, you know, I did some just quick math. You take out like roads and some of those other access points, probably looking at an R16 on 5.67 acres, maybe 38 to 42. Shay, are you able to mute the old camera? Okay, there we go. I don't remember really, oh, I, I was just saying, you see, you're looking at about 38 to 42 units at, at that R16, but again, you're going to lose a lot for a, a above-ground drainage basin. That takes up a lot in most residential developments. So I don't know, it, it'll come down to how their engineering puts that together. Again, the real, the real number is the 6,000 square foot minimum requirement. So and they have a really weird, if you look at the CP3 zoned area, it's kind of a weird configuration. If you look at the map, it's that big long sliver between the, between the multifamily to the west and then the commercial to the east. That area is kind of hard to develop for residences. So that may impact that number a little bit in different ways, or they may look at other things. I don't know what their plan is for that. But again, we need to be careful getting too much into those kind of discussions because that doesn't have as much application at this point to a rezon request.
Sure. I was just curious about how many homes would be on the proper, could theoretically be on the property.
Yeah, so what I told you is probably about right. I've done the math in the past and that's what it's about out.
Do we want to end our work session and take a six-minute break?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. We'll see you guys in six minutes.
Hey Shay, we are still having problems where I'm not seeing people. Do you have any other recommendations?
Sorry. When do you get a comment? It's during public comments. So she'll ask.
You're muted.
I'm going to put this up here and then I will step away. Yeah, I know. It's, it's a little weird with COVID.
Shaylee, I think you're on mute.
I was on mute on purpose. Sorry. Someone here asked me a question. What did you ask me, Suzette?
I'm, you know what? The people are still like half, half of them, half their faces blocked. Do you have any recommendations?
I don't. So I usually see, I can see your forehead. Like I see what you're talking about with you, but I don't see that with everybody else. I'm not sure what's going on.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. Thanks.
Of course.
No, no, we're in the other side. And you live by there?
I'm not an applicant, we're the applicant.
Oh, okay.
If you have any questions beforehand, you can, he is as well. But he lives across the street.
Well, I, I think I saw your name. Aren't you Lou Poulsen?
Yes, I'm Steve Poulsen.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're the hall for the St. Holmes lead on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I remember your name, yeah.
Who is lead on?
He's health-wise, he's doing good.
Sure.
But health-wise, I mean, he gets around with Walker and does really well, so.
And he is, he's still at Peterson?
Yes.
Cool. You're in the hall, right?
Yeah, I'm staying in their house right now. Temporarily, I'd say.
Did this stay in your home?
No.
Yeah.
I'm here to hear what you have up your...
I just wanted to apologize to everybody. The feedback, I couldn't get video on my desktop here. And so I decided I'd try it on my laptop and. Apparently that's where I got the feedback was both of them were too close to each other. So my apologies.
Yeah, it's okay. No worries.
Just don't let it happen again.
Is Suzette coming back? Are we, are we okay to wait maybe a minute or so to see if Suzette comes back?
Maybe I'd just start the meeting and if she jumps back in, she jumps back in.
Okay. Can you hear us, Kent?
I can.
Okay. Okay, we want to welcome everybody to our Tuesday, February ninth, twenty twenty-one um planning commission meeting. Uh. Like to welcome everyone here. We, all the planning commission members are present with the exception of Commissioner DeMar. I don't see your comment. Do we have any public comment? Shaylee, do you?
So yes, I do, but it's for the public hearing, correct? Nobody just has a public comment. It's for the public hearing. Okay, so I don't have any public comment beforehand, but yes, for the action item.
Okay. See, there's no uh public comment. We'll move into presentation and reports. Mr. Eggit.
Thank you. Just wanted to again quickly note Capitol Hill legislation is moving on quite a few. Bills that affect communities directly um and uh land use. Decision-making of cities being, for lack of a better word, preempted by governmental entities is on the table in multiple bills. So please be aware of that. Um, if you have any questions about anything I've sent you or you're catching into something and want more information, please let me know and I'll see what I can do to get you information about that so you can reach out to. Whoever you would like to discuss those kind of bills further. And I'll try to again send those digests to you as I get them. Um. On the side of what we'll be seeing at future meetings, we do have the uh Dutch Brothers Coffee. Site plan proposal coming back. They've resubmitted for a final review of the planning commission. We'll see how staff reports come in on that and where that goes. As well as the three lot subdivision and site plan that A W E Engineering is doing to accommodate that. Uh, thirdly, we have the uh. Corner Gibby Gibby property up on the corner of fifteen hundred slash Cozy Dell Drive and Riverdale Road. There's a. Submittal, a preliminary submittal that has been provided for that property for convenient story use. And that will be um coming to upon the commission at a future date, uh or not future date, on the twenty-third. Sorry. Um, and then also I have a conditional use permit request for a a digital conversion on a billboard sign. So. Those are all forthcoming. Uh as I stated, Harbor Freight is continuing vigorously, so is um. Five Below and Five Below, we think might be open as early as uh April with where they're at. Uh, maybe even late March with how they're moving forward. The Zepi site is is pretty much almost done. And we anticipate them opening very soon at their location as well, and that building will be done at that point. Um, and um. Also Falcon Hill is moving forward with its second slash third building up on its site and and that that area is getting very. Full with buildings, so keep an eye on that. With that, that's everything I have from a presentation and report perspective, unless you have questions for me about any of that, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Um, consent items, consideration of meeting minutes from January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one work session, January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes from January twenty-six, twenty twenty-one.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll move on to our action items. Um, action item one A, our public hearing to receive and consider. Comments regarding a rezon request for properties located approximately fifteen twenty-six, fifteen twenty-eight, fifteen sixty and fifteen eighty West. Ritter Drive, Riverdale, Utah, eight four four zero five. A zoning change from agricultural A one, regional planned. Regional plan commercial CP three and low-impact transition overlay L I T zoning to single-family residential R one six zoning. Requested by Riverdale Living LLC. Any, does someone that would like to open?
I'll make a motion. Do we open the public hearing?
Do we have any public comments? Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay, yes, we do. Just give me two seconds to get it set up.
Okay.
Whoever wants to come first, you just need to state your name for the.
Should we talk at this time or will we?
You, if they have questions, you can come up, but usually this is just for anybody who.
Else.
Yeah.
This is Jane Hall and I live at twelve sixty-five West, fifty-one seventy-five South. And um I am very excited about the rezoning to go to residential. But I do have concerns about the size of the lots. The Coleman Farms are, I believe, rezoned at R one eight. And um they are very small lots. And uh which is what most young people want today. They don't want a big yard and I understand that. But I am concerned about the size of those lots being R one six. To be. Uh what kind of homes would go in there and the number of homes that would go there as well. I just want you to know that because our home lot backs up to the Coleman Farms. We had the original buyer to Coleman Farms come to our home and show exactly what they were planning to do. And after we bought into it and agreed to it, they immediately sold the lot to Richmond American. So I do know from experience that that happens and I realize there's nothing that the city can do about that. But please take that into consideration when you are wanting to rezone this property.
Can I also just ask a question about the rezone of the Gibby Floral Lot? Where Maverick is going in. Are they going to house, um be able to um gas up big tank trucks or?
Fortunately, right, unfortunately, right now, we can't discuss that matter. This is strictly for this rezon request.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we know who call-in user four is?
I have no idea, but I believe that is all we have for the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Shaylee, will you poll the commission, please?
Commissioner Nye?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiers?
Aye.
Commissioner DeMar?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wingfield?
Aye.
And Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Thank you. Um. Our public hearing is now closed. Um. Now we have the consideration to forward recommendation to the city council regarding a proposed rezon request from agricultural A one. Regional plan commercial CP three and low-impact transition overlay L I T zoning to single-family residential R one six zoning. For properties located at approximately fifteen twenty-six, fifteen twenty-eight, fifteen sixty and fifteen eighty West. Ritter, Ritter Drive, Riverdale, Utah, eight four four zero five, as requested by Riverdale Living LLC. Mr. Eggit, turn the time to you then before discussion.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Just before we get into it, uh I just wanted to indicate that if if Ms. Hall would like to call me. Um, I'd be glad to talk to her about the Riverdale site so she can reach out to me and have that conversation if she would like, and I'll try to answer her questions as best I can with what I do know. So. Make sure that that she's aware of that, Shaylee, and and go from there. Thank you, if you'll give her my number. Um, that being said, with the executive summary, as I discussed during the work session, the applicant here is Riverdale Living LLC. They're represented in this petition. This evening by Brittany Yates, um and Josh was part of it as well. I did work with him as well as part of it, but mostly with Brittany. As you noted, the range is that fifteen twenty-six to fifteen eighty West Ritter Drive, and you noted the zoning in your representation of this this item tonight. Uh, this request is allow for the possibility of future development for single-family uh density residential units on this property, and you can see more about that in your packet. Properties around the site include the north R five zoning, to the east A one and CP three zoning, to the south A one zoning, and to the west C three zoning. Um, the request is on five point six seven acres of of property along Ritter Drive near Freeway Park Drive and fifteen hundred west. All state code and city code requirements for public commentary and public hearing have been noted and scheduled for this meeting. I did receive three um calls prior to this meeting. Um, two of them appeared to be residents somehow somewhere in the area. Um, asking some questions and at least raising some concerns relative to the request. Um, to the point where they had indicated that they may be at a meeting tonight, but but it didn't, I didn't recognize or or notice that either one were in attendance. Uh, I did have a third interested party who was just asking about the real estate and what the reason was about and and what might be allowed to go in there. I don't know if the person was a resident of the community or not, but that that's what we did receive as far as inquiries prior to the meeting. Um, this is a recommendation and review by the Planning Commission City Council. Uh, clearly, the planning commission can use it or discretion you'd like in your your recommendation, City Council. So just to make sure that you add appropriate findings of fact to support your recommendation. Ownership on the property is Riverdale Living LLC and L V on Paulson Trust, one half and all. Um, on the properties currently, there's a couple of homes, majority of them are being rented. I think there's there's four total homes, three are being rented, and one is currently vacant. And then the properties sit otherwise uh underutilized, well, not underutilized, unused as currently used standing. Um, the. General plan for this area is set at residential low density. The proposed rezon request and project concept requested uses in compliance with this land use designation and is supported in this area by the land use master plan element of the Riverdale General Plan. Documentation regarding the Riverdale General Plan definition of residential residential low density has been provided in your packet. Following the executive summary, you'll see that as the next two pages. Um, following those, you'll see the the map summation of the area that's being requested for rezon. The applicants um. Filled out sheet and and provided provided documentations in support of that, including their their answers to the questions in their summary. Letter to the Planning Commission of the City. Um, the outline of the uh plot drawings from the area to be rezoned. The legal description of the properties, the the receipt showing payment, and then the public hearing notice checklist that that I complete to show that we've met those requirements. Um, you'll also see down the ways affidavit assignment placement and then the locations of those signs on the property of. For the for the uh just the knowledge of the planning commission and the decision that was made at staff level, thought was that if we put two signs up so it is a little more visible with the largeness, the large size of the property, it would make more sense to put it up there. By code, uh we just have to put the site in the most proximate place to the the site. Um, that's visible to the general public. In this case, one of the signs is on the Howell property that the city has acquired. However. It was placed there because the property surrounding it on all three of the four sides, not including the road, are a part of this rezon request, and the property directly to the west was fenced in. And there's some concrete around the base of the fence that made it impossible to to put the sign on that property. So we put it at the most proximate corner location we could. To still advertise appropriately to the public and get their attention. And then we did have the sign further to the west along the Tolles Property Home so that there was multiple instances. so that there was multiple instances of advertisement. And it was clear that this property was being rezoned in the extent of the rezone request. So just wanted to make sure that was clear in case that comes up as a concern. And we did meet the requirement of city code in that advertisement, so that was aware. Following that, you'll see then the notices that were posted by our city recorder as well as the posting in the Standard Examiner newspaper. And we comply with all the rezone those requirements. And at that point, I would defer back to the Planning Commission for any questions that you may have of me or the applicants if they're present, which I believe they are with Ms. Nye in her room. So with that, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Comments?
I do have a question. Go ahead, Wanda.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Are the Yates there in the building there? Who's representing them there today?
Yes, Josh and Brittany both are here.
Okay, I just would like to know, can you tell us kind of what you plan to do with this land? So that we can, not that it makes any difference whether we zone or not. What are your plans and what's the timeframe of it? Because it's in disrepair, and I don't think the neighbors there want it to drag on forever and ever. Do we have any timeline if this goes through?
Hold on one second. It is on safety. If you want to come up and answer hers, then... Sorry.
Hello, hi guys.
Hi.
My wife shoved me up here. I think you'd rather see her face here, but...
I am cute.
So what we plan to do is actually, the interesting thing here is right after the last request, you know, I was, I'm not, I'd be lying if I didn't say I was a little discouraged. And so my wife wants, she's got a lot of her own resources into this as well. And she's, she wanted to jump in and get involved with it, and so I said, sure. And she made call, a lot of calls, and did a lot of research and so forth. And that's where this R16 came from. Was based on numerous conversations with City Council members, with other professionals, with the members of the city, and with myself. And that came from the fact that, we knew the Coleman was R18, a little bigger. We knew this would be a little bit of a stretch, but, and a little bit of a compromise for the city. And it's a, we feel like it's a large compromise on our part. But it also really, I think, fits that area, given the huge apartment complex behind it, and then you've got commercial on both sides. You do have a few houses on the other side of the street. Steve is here, by the way, Steve Paulson. I believe the Barlow's are participating on WebEx if you have any questions for them. So all the properties are represented. But what we plan to do, oh, so what I was gonna say is, my experience encompasses 90% of this, of lots, doing lots. We thus far have not sold them to any builders, I mean onesie, twosie. But we did a 96-lot subdivision in Twilla with an HOA on the east end. Super nice subdivision. We did a small one in Syracuse. Ended up really nice. We have done entry monuments, we've done perimeter fencing, all that kind of stuff, interior lighting. And so we just intend to build a lot right when it's zoned. I've already got the financing there, it's already in the queue, they're working on it. So if this passes in a few weeks, then we've got to come back to get final plat approval and then move right into building it in the spring. So we would improve the lots and sell the lots. I think that's the best for the community, honestly, is to offer people a lot that they want to build on. Now, you know, is, can I, you know, write that in stone or whatever? No, but we don't have a history of doing anything but that, if that answers your question. Is that sufficient, hopefully? Okay.
Yeah, I'd just like to say...
Oh, did they answer that earlier?
I just wanted to say, this rezone request, in my opinion, is better than the last one you had. I mean, you're gonna get some resistance from people that live in the area because they want everything to stay the way it is.
Right.
I mean, I've lived in Riverdale for 64 years, and if everything stayed the same as it did when I was growing up, most of these people wouldn't even be living here. So, you know, progress is gonna happen. But I think what you've come up with rezone-wise is a better fit for that area. And I, you know, and I think once it's all developed and everything, I think the people in that area will appreciate it a lot more, too.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
I have a question. On a 6,000-square-foot lot, I know it's rather a small lot. My lot's not big, and mine's 10,000 square feet. What, what square footage, you know, kind of footprint of a house can fit onto a 6,000-square-foot lot?
You could get probably a 3,000-square-foot home on there, depending on, you know, stories, how many stories you go. Honestly, it would be even better if the side setback in the R16 is eight feet. It would even be better if it was six feet, you'd get a little bit larger home on there and maybe do a rambler. You just have more options that way. That would be an option if we came back after this with like a PRUD or something, which might make sense because there's a big piece of property that goes back that we can't use. And so we can kind of spread that into the rest of it. I don't know yet, though. But yeah, so the side yards are six feet, or I mean eight feet right now. Be ideal if they're just tiny bit bigger, but, you know, you can still get a decent-sized home on there. These are actually becoming pretty, you know, more common all along. They're starting to do smaller lots because people don't want as big the yard. People just need lots is what they need, you know what I mean? But it's surprising, yeah, how big, how big of a home you can get on that small of a lot. Does that answer that, hopefully?
Yeah, thank you.
So I have a question, Mr. Gates. If you, so have you already, are you gonna sell paper lots? Are you, are you going to be the builder? What, can you clarify that?
Yeah, thank you. So, no, the plan right now is, that's what I was trying to say, but I guess it wasn't super clear. So thank you for questioning that. So, no, we're gonna improve them is the plan, not sell paper lots. If, and then once they're improved, you know, if, we're not, we're planning on just selling lots. But, you know, I can't say that we wouldn't maybe, you know, bring a builder on who was building nice product, that we would give people the opportunity to select this builder or something like that. But as it sits, we intend to improve it. Again, I have not, our history is to build out the lots and sell lots. It's kind of a dying art because the builders are now doing this a lot. And then they're taking it all the way through. Or the, a lot of developers are selling the paper to the builders, and so...
So are you guys gonna develop it, or someone else?
We would be. We would be, I'd be seeing it through the improvement stage to improve it. And it'll, and the improvements will likely be done, very possibly be done by Steve Paulson, who's in the room, one of our partners, which that's what he does, is excavating. So we, you know, we may be accomplishing that in-house.
So you're a general and you'll, you'll develop it?
We don't, you don't have to be a general to, he is. So he would be the one doing the, okay, sorry, yeah, I didn't really clarify that. Yeah, no, we wouldn't actually be doing the excavating, but we would be hiring the excavator and seeing it through and not necessarily be selling paper lots.
Because, because what I am seeing with building, with building, selling of real estate and building, builders, like people that are going in and developing land, they're holding on to it, they're building on it because there's not a lot of land left.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, yeah, you're seeing that trend. And so there's, there, in my opinion, I mean, there needs to be more, I don't know why there's not more product, there seems to be a shortage. And I can't exactly say why, I don't know how, maybe COVID affected that or something, but... I hear, I hear you, yeah, that's what's happening. But that's, that's not necessarily what our intentions are here, and that's not what our history is.
Jen Barlow raised a hand.
She may have something to say?
Yeah, she does.
Our history is to build them out, sell the lots.
So develop it, get it all done, ready to go, sell each lot?
That's our intention.
Just clarification, when you say improve the lots, you're talking about putting in streets, curb and gutter, sewer lines, all that is what you're referring to? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, are we talking then about patio homes is what you're kind of looking at? Or are you thinking about basements?
It's always better if you can offer the purchaser of the lot as many options as they can do. So if the, if the ground, Steve, do you want to talk to that? Do you know how the...
I'm not a builder. I feel confident we could put basements, at least half-basements on some of that.
Basements or half-basements is, he feels like would be possible. I guess each individual would have to kind of decide that, but... I think it's, in my opinion, you're always gonna see the most quality when you offer the most options. That has a direct impact on the quality you end up with. When you start putting all these stipulations on people or on the lot, that's where you start to see the quality affected. That's not, that's not CC, I'm not talking about CCNRs. Talking about like, you know, the basement thing or other things that making, you know, the envelope smaller.
Well, that would have to be with the builder they go with that would finish that. But you guys would be, you're saying you guys will develop this, have it fully developed? Like Rick asked, the roads paved, everything will be curb and gutter, all that's gonna be in?
Yes. And then they would decide from that point on.
And who's they?
The end buyer, whether they're doing an owner-builder, or whether they're hiring a builder, or however that looks, the end user would be making those decisions from there on out. You know, they may have some, some CCNRs or something like that. But, you know, whether they do a basement or two-story or whatever is... Because we're not a builder, I'm not a builder, and so they would be deciding that.
You know, we need to kind of concentrate more on the rezone rather than the development because you're gonna come back in with a preliminary site plan with your drawings and everything. So I'm not ready to kind of get stuck on what your plans are as far as homes and all that more in to the mindset of the rezone. You know, you can get to that next step. And when you come before us, we'll have more questions for you on the types of homes and all that. But tonight, I think we should take more to the rezone and, you know, if it fits the area and all the concerns and that.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
The only thing I have is that if we rezone this and then you let it sit for five years and you don't do anything, I'm concerned. Do we have a timeframe?
Yep, it's sitting right now, and it's zoned for one particular thing, and it's just sitting right now. So if we rezone it to something else and it sits for a year, it's not being any different than it is now, it's just that it's rezoned for another purpose, so...
Yeah, this enables us to move forward like we'd like to.
I do have a question. This is Commissioner DeMar. Are we gonna be able to support the traffic, you know, if we put all of these homes in it?
You have two options for them to go east or west. And there are some issues if you go west down to the frontage road. It gets a little backed up on, but it's primarily just on the peak hours. But there's another option to go the other way. So if it backs up, people are gonna naturally turn the other way and go east. And so, you know, it is kind of what it is. If the city eventually wants to put a light down there on the frontage road and Ritter, that's always an option, but, you know, this is, this is a lot less units than all the previous things we've looked at. And so that, and a lot more people are working from home now. A lot more people are just, the trend is going that way, hopefully that helps. You know, a couple of these guys live right on the road, you guys want to speak to that, or?
Is it all coming right out into Ritter?
Yeah, it would come out onto Ritter, and then, yeah, there's no other ways they could go out.
There's always, there's already a lot of traffic on 1500 West because of those buildings that they allowed to go in there.
I realize that, and I...
The drive backs up now more than peak times.
Yeah.
Since they opened it up.
Yeah, they're saying even beyond peak times, you're getting some backup on there, but...
How many cars are we talking, approximately?
You know...
How many homes are gonna go in?
How many homes?
Well, 35 to 40-ish.
Every home has two cars, yeah. So you gotta, not mine, we only have one car, you gotta figure that.
We probably need to rein that...
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. I think, Jen Barlow, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. I was just gonna say that we are, we are working with Josh on this. And we've been developing for, you know, I'm the third-generation developer. And we work with a lot of residential builders. We are not in the building business, but getting improved lots ready to sell to builders, that is what we do, and we would be a part of this process.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have any, anything else that pertains to the rezone itself? I would just say, I think on behalf of all of us, Mr. Gates, that getting the rezone, when you're writing letters, take the emotions out of your letters and just strictly facts. And make sure you guys make a good effort to clean everything up. Go ahead, Blair.
I'd just like to make a motion that we forward to the City Council with a favorable recommendation on the rezone request from Agricultural A1 Regional Plan CP3 and Low Impact Transition Overlay LIT zoning to Single Family Residential R1-6 zoning for properties located at approximately 1526, 1528, 1560, and 1580 West Ritter Drive.
I second it.
All in favor?
Do a voice vote on this one, please.
Yeah, I was going to have Shaylee pull the commission.
Sorry, the struggle is real today. I'm like having a hard time doing the simplest tasks. Okay, let's see. Commissioner Jones?
Aye.
Commissioner Nye?
Aye.
Commissioner Spires?
Aye.
Commissioner DeMar?
Aye.
Commissioner Herman?
Aye.
Commissioner Wingfield?
Aye.
And Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously. You've got your rezon. Any discretionary items?
Oh, I forgot something. I do have something. This is something that the rest of the planning commissioners will want to know. The mayor has extended an offer, well, I guess, an invitation to Chair Spires to continue on to the Planning Commission in another four-year term. And she has graciously accepted. That will be presented to the city council at the next meeting on the 16th. It's part of that consent agenda. And then Planning Commissioner Rick Herman has also been extended the invitation to continue on in his position for another four years, and that will also be reviewed during the consent agenda on the 16th. So just wanted to make sure you're all aware of that as planning commissioners, and that should be good. Feel free to support them if you'd like to at the city council meeting next Tuesday. And obviously, you don't have to come in person, just you could watch it online and say, way to go, we support you, kind of thing. But just wanted to let you know that, that we appreciate them being willing to serve with us again for another four years, and we look forward to working together. So thank you. If you have any other comments, feel free to share, but I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Eggit. Thank you, Commissioner Nye. Anybody else? Do you have anything else? A motion to adjourn?
I'll be able to listen to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a good night, guys.
Bye, everyone. Have a good night.
That's it. But it depends on how many discretionary they have, but, yeah.
Do you guys have a cyclone drawn up?